Good afternoon, welcome to the Committee of Hole, meeting for January 7th. Before we begin and go into Boyd Forum, I'd like to remind council and the audience as well, our council executive, Dr. Lila Cox is working on our rules and procedures, so if you have anything that you think would help us operate more effectively, if you please pass that on to Dr. Cox, appreciate it. Okay, first order business is Boyd Forum. If anybody would like to speak on a topic, you can fill out a card, and I believe we'll allocate a couple, a minute or so. Is there anybody that would like to speak in Boyd Forum? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to the first council action item, Appointment Board of Trustees Police Officers Retirement Fund. And under that, we have two nominees, Richard Peterson and Stephanie Taylor. If anybody would like to speak on behalf of either candidate.
Move to approve by acclamation.
Second.
Okay, sir, would you like to say, address the council?
I'm Richard Peterson, so I'd like to speak on my own behalf.
Certainly.
I've enjoyed this over the last couple of years, and I would enjoy continuing on, and then the board, if you would so, you know, see fit. That's, you know, that's it.
Okay, any other comments or observations? Okay, then, if, I believe everybody has a ballot in front of them.
Voice vote.
I'm sorry.
Just a voice vote.
A voice vote.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to our next one, is appointments for the community maritime park, Board of Trustees, for the term expiring October 30 of 2013. There's been a person, Mark Taylor's been nominated. We'll start off and see if there's anybody that would like to speak on his behalf.
I'm going to make a motion to approve by acclamation. We only have one person for each slot.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Okay, any discussion, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a substitute motion, that we suspend the vote on this. I think Mr. Taylor and Mr. Gunther are very able, appreciate their willingness to serve, but I was on this council a year ago, when we had a very, I think we had many discussions about increasing the size of the CNPA from 12 to 14. And if my recollection serves me right, I believe the reason that, that we moved to bring the trustees from 12 to 14 was to have more minority representation on the CNPA, to have more gender representation on the CNPA. And for us to continue at that number without that minority and gender representation, I don't, I don't know if, if that is what we should do. When we talk the talk about making a board, a committee, trustees larger for more minority inclusion, and then we don't walk the walk, I have issue with that. I would actually like to see that CNPA board and trustees go in reverse, and go from 14 to maybe a more manageable number of eight. So if I would, could so, make a substitute motion to, to table this until we have a, an opportunity for this council to have a discussion about actually reducing the size of the CNPA, I would like to make that substitute motion, that we delay that.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, now we have discussion on the substitute motion.
Be tabled.
Excuse me, to be tabled, my bad.
Be tabled.
Can't discuss.
It's no discussion.
Okay, so there's no discussion, right? Okay, everybody, is, there's no discussion. All in favor of tabling the nominations to CNPA, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed by no? Okay, let's, let me see, we've got one, two, three, four nos, and one, two, three, four, five yays, so the motion carries, substitute motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, councilman?
I'd like to know what the subsequent action is going to be to discuss this and work it out.
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Wingate. Yeah, I just like, think that we should have a discussion about taking that, the CNPA down to more manageable size of maybe, say, eight, nine, somewhere down there. As we know, the stadium's been complete, you know, a 14-member board or trustees is just an extremely large number. About a year ago, when you weren't a councilperson at that time, sir, we had a very long discussion. I think we actually discussed it a few times. There was a couple of councilpersons that felt very passionate about bringing the trustees from 12 to 14 to include minorities, and to have more gender representation. And then, and then we actually, we talked that talk, and then we actually bring, we don't bring those appointees forward. So I think that we ought to, we ought to make this an agenda item for a council meeting, either our next council meeting, or the one after sometime, to actually start looking at maybe reducing the size of that to a more manageable size. I can't think of any board or committee that we have in the city that has 14 members. So, you know, I'd just like to maybe talk about bringing it down a little bit more manageable size. And, you know, these, these, these potential appointees actually have an opportunity to speak at these CNPA meetings. You know, Chairman Merrill offers everyone an opportunity, the public, to offer input, so it's not that anybody's going to be denied the chance to speak on any issue. But I'd like to see this council maybe take a look at actually reducing the size of that to a more manageable number. And maybe we'd have the opportunity to kind of batter that around and discuss that. Thank you.
Councilman?
This is a procedural issue, and I've mentioned it to Dr. Cox, that I hope that we will discuss it in the rules and procedures. Theoretically, that conversation should not have ever happened. It was on the table, if we want to discuss it further, it needs to be taken off the table. And in the future, I do hope that we, instead of tabling things, refer them to staff, or ask that they be put on a future agenda, instead of tabling, because they're, those are valid questions, and at this point, the only way we could have the conversation you just had should have been to untable and re-discuss. And so I hope that you will follow through the way you said you would, but just for future reference, tabling doesn't allow that. Thank you.
Yes, very good point, thank you. Councilman Myers, did you want to say something?
No, I, since this has been tabled, I guess it would have to come up under new business, if we want to have it for another agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, moving on to item three, is the council executive review and recommendations. I have asked Council Executive Cox, and I believe City Administrator Reynolds, to give us some assistance. This is something we've never had before, we've never done, so I was looking for a little direction from both of these people, as well as from council, on how we should proceed. So with that, without putting you on the spot...
Thank you, Council President Wu. You know, I don't think we have to recount the, the long struggle it took us to get the council executive, and, you know, we've had the opportunity, under the Landrum agreement, to have Dr. Cox be with us for the requisite 90 days, when she was supposed to then be evaluated. I, I have had some conversations in regards to this issue with, with multiple people, including some councilpeople, and I do understand that, you know, there is some discomfort with the idea that 90 days is a significant, is a significant enough period of time in which to evaluate Dr. Cox. And I think you have multiple options on the table for you at this point. I also understand that there's an undercurrent of us going back to the old issue of who has the ability to hire and fire employees, and whether or not that is a, an issue here. And I've also been giving that a lot of thought. And, and, you know, the charter is very clear on that issue, it is, it is the mayor's authority to, to do that. However, I might suggest that that really won't come into play unless that ever actually happens. And what I'm suggesting is maybe, is that that's a bridge that you don't need to cross today. That, that if we can find a way to kind of set that aside, and recognize that the charter is ultimately the controlling issue, but ask yourself at what point would the mayor ever make that recommendation or that decision? He has been in contact with the councilpeople on this issue as well. He wants to, he wants to continue to reaffirm that it is his right to hire and fire, but he is also very cognizant that anything that this council requests is something that he will take into great consideration. So when it, when it comes to that particular issue, I think you would actually be hard-pressed to have to ever go over that bridge. And so, you know, as opposed to debating something that we've debated ad nauseam in the past, I just, I would like to throw that out there. When it comes to Dr. Cox and the 90-day period, there has been some discussion in regards to maybe we should be looking at six months, or a year, to give her a fair shake. I can certainly tell you from my professional opinion, I found her to be an outstanding advocate for this body. I found her also to be extremely competent, and, and my opinion is, is that she has brought a lot of, of structure to this organization, and if her plans are, are any foreshadowing of the future, you know, I think, you know, she will help this body to become an extremely efficient organization. And so when it comes to, you know, her, her abilities and her professionalism, when it, when it comes to relationships with the office of the mayor, I don't think there's any doubt about that whatsoever.
Thank you very much. Dr. Cox, I don't want to put you on the spot, is there anything that you would like to say to the body? Okay, with that, then, let me open it up to council, to see where, what your feelings are, and your, what, yes, councilman?
Thank you, Dr. Wu. I was the lone vote against Dr. Cox when we were going through this, and, and part of my thinking was, you know, I, I'd been frustrated all along, that the salary range we were considering was not going to get us someone who would be able to do the job we really wanted them to do. Since my lone vote against it, I have been, I have been persuaded otherwise, that Dr. Cox was willing to come in at that low salary as a gamble, that she knew she could do what she needed to do, and hoped that she could, you know, convince us that that was a valuable, you know, she, she was a valuable asset, and, and I have found her to be a, as, as Mr. Reynolds said, a great asset for this, this city as a whole. So I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to sort of say it multiple ways, but I'll say it clearly at the end, but I would like for us to ask the mayor to engage Dr. Cox with an employment contract of $75,000 with city benefits, as a city employee. I think that in the issue of the mayor's ability to hire and fire, I think that in some ways, it's important for him to keep that ability, because there are certain things that, that any employee would not, would, it would be a bad work environment, you know, if, if she were doing illegal acts, or whatever. There are procedures within the city to deal with employees who are, are not behaving appropriately. So I would like for the mayor to retain the ability to fire for cause, as we do with other employees. And I would like for the contract then to say that the council is the only body that may terminate without cause. And additionally, I think that it is important for us to include annual review, review her performance and salary, and so I think that that would be an important part of the contract. So I'm going to make a motion that we ask the mayor to engage Dr. Cox as a city employee at $75,000 with benefits. The mayor may terminate for cause, the council may terminate without cause, and require an annual review of performance and salary.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved to second. Okay, discussion?
I've just had a question on...
Certainly.
Why would we start with $75,000, when we've already offered other people $82,500?
I am open to amendments to the motion, particularly on that issue, I just, that was a number.
Okay. I don't know if that helps or not. Yes, councilman?
Okay, thank you, yeah, we could, we could make it at least $75,000. I'm just offering that as maybe a solution, if you want to consider a higher amount. At a minimum, $75,000, maybe. I don't know if anyone has any input on that.
I'm not going to support the motion, and I'll tell you why. I don't know what Dr. Cox does. I've had some communication with her, but it has not been very much. I'm glad that Mr. Reynolds seems to know what she does, but I, I don't know what she We have not received reports from her regarding her work, and that bothers me. I don't know what her relationship is with Elaine Major, in terms of the work they both do together, or separately. I don't know who supervises Dr. Cox. When I had a conversation with her last week, I asked her, "How do you get your assignments, or your direction?" I asked her, "Who supervises you?" I asked her if Mr. Reynolds supervises her. She said, "No." She said, "Mr. Messer does not supervise her." She told me the president of the council does not supervise her, that no one supervises her, that she gets her directions from the council. I'm concerned about this, because this, this city, in my point of view, is not very transparent in terms of what employees do, what department heads do, and the person who should be the most transparent, for us, is certainly the council staff. So I don't have enough information. When I look at the job qualifications, the essential job functions, I can't tell that in this 90-day period, that she has performed the essential functions of the job. She's also changed some of the essential functions of the job, which I think this council needs to discuss, whether or not that's in our best interest. For instance, she's added, "Prepares budget estimates and control expenditures of office of city council." Now that word "control expenses of the, of the office of city council," what does that mean? And yet, she's not here to answer those questions. Well, I do see her back there. But I think that we need more clarification as to these things that she's added. Furthermore, the very last essential function of the office of the job says, "Coordinates," this is what it originally said, "coordinates agendas, including presentations by outside groups." She changed that to read, "Coordinates agenda preparation with council and the mayor's office." Well, you have to understand, this is the council's agenda, and that is in our rules and procedure, however, it's not a charter requirement. But if you approve this, you're also soon approving, changing the wording in this job description. And there are some changes in this job description that concern me. I don't think it's appropriate to use the word "control expenditures of the city council." So that's a power you're going to be giving her. But I'm not going to support the motion, because I do not have enough information, I don't know what she does, I have not seen any evidence that she can perform the essential functions of the job, so I will not be supporting the motion. I would support her continuing for another 90 days, as a temporary employee, to give us further documentation that she can perform the essential functions of the job, which include research and analysis regarding legislative matters, and assisting in the development of ordinances and resolutions, and reports to the city council. When I asked Dr. Cox if she assisted in preparation of the agenda, I believe she told me she, that that was the president's duty, but however, it is in her job description also. I would ask council to give this much more consideration. This is a very high-paying job, $75,000. I have looked at her resume, and I had great concerns that she did not have the background to, to do the essential job functions, as we have advertised them. So I will not be supporting this motion, I do not feel that it is in the best interest of the council.
Okay, councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have to say that I have, I've had a good interaction with Dr. Cox, and have a, have had, she's been very open, and responded very quickly to all my requests. I just, I plan on supporting the motion, I just have one quick question for Mr. Reynolds, and that is, if the mayor decides not to give up his power to fire without cause, where does that leave, if the motion passes, and then he says, "No, I'm not going to do that," where does that leave us with this issue?
Well, you know, that's a great question, and frankly, I was hoping that we didn't have to ask that question, because again, you know, this is a bridge that I don't see anyone ever coming across. Essentially, all it is, is somebody laying a marker down at this point, as opposed to trying to find a solution. That's Bill Reynolds' opinion. You know, he certainly could determine that he will enter into a contract and not waive that charter responsibility. You know, within the spirit of ensuring that this, that this body continues to have a council executive, which is something that we all worked very hard on for the last year and six months, at least for me. And so, you know, I think that that's probably the option that would occur, but I haven't had the opportunity to talk with, with the mayor on that particular issue, but if he was to ask my advice, that would be the advice I would give him.
Counselwoman? By face, President.
Okay. A couple of things. I intend to support this particular motion, because it is about the establishment of our executive administrator. Regardless of who that person is, it is about establishing an office of city council that has qualified staff. And I know Mr. Reynolds said that he didn't want to go down this road, but of course, when you look at the fact that we have, we are nine councilmembers, and we have one person to act on our behalf, which is not enough of a staff. So no one knows how we are going to get that staff. I have some ideas, but we won't go down that road today. So we do need other staff. We also need stability in this position. We need to have someone that's going to be in this position, and not come back 90 days later uncertain, because people don't tend to work as hard, commit themselves fully, when they may or may not be here. So we need someone to be able to take us through our policies, procedures, rules, and everything reviewed, with the confidence that they have the support of this council, in, in reference to that. $75,000 is nothing. I know that when I was a councilmember, and we were talking about this, I was looking at nothing minimum of $75,000, because less than that would not keep a person who has to go through and, and deal with nine individual councilmembers, and their own personal agendas, as well as the agendas of the council itself. Because that, it requires two things for this person. It requires that person to take action on what we do as a council, but also be able to manage nine councilmembers and all of their ideas. Now I've had some wonderful conversations with Dr. Cox, and she's trying to rein me in, and she says that I have four years in which to get through some things that I want to get through. So we're trying to work on how I'm going to get some of those ideas through. But I think that we need some more stability than 90 days in this position, because there are some things that we have to do. Councilmember Myers mentioned ordinances. Well, I do believe that in two years, this council, or the previous council, only dealt with one ordinance. So I don't know who is supposed to come up with these ordinance ideas, whether or not it is the council, individual councilmembers who have issues, and, or whether or not it is the executor. So this position is a work in progress. It's going to have to be defined. No one had the, the formula to how it was going to fit into the council, and how we were going to interact. Do I agree with everything? Not necessarily, no, I do not. We've had full conversations on how we differ in this position, and what those rules are. But I think when we do our rules and procedures, we can be able to better define what our expectations are. And after a year, we would definitely know what we're looking for in our administrator for the city council members. So I'm going to support this, and I look forward to the conversation later about staffing for the council.
Counselwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President, fellow councilmembers. This is a, it's a challenging issue, and I realize that Mr. Reynolds said didn't want to have to cross that bridge, but we are with this motion, and I'm not going to support the motion today. And my concern is that I've communicated with the mayor, and one of the councilmembers has talked to the mayor about this, and he continues to rest on the charter, which is his right to do that. What the charter does provide, that he will remove all officers and employees, and appoint them, discipline, whatever, unless otherwise to provide in this charter. So the way, the only way I can see this actually working, where we have our own staff persons, if there's an amendment to the charter. There is no legislative body, I'm aware of, that, maybe on the local level at some point, but, well, definitely here, but on the state legislature, the US Congress, where the governor or the president can go in and remove a staff member of the legislative branch, it's just, it would not work. If, you know, Senator Gates had a staff member that was working for him in the state legislature, and the governor said, "I want to remove that person," it'd be a real difficult thing to do, and I think that it would really impede the ability of the legislative body to do what it needs to do. I don't have anything against Dr. Cox, I think 90 days is a very short time period, given the fact that she has really had to find her way through this, this, this branch of government, because frankly, we're not a separate legislative branch, we are somewhat separate, but every employee answers to the mayor, so it makes it a real challenge for us to get our jobs done. And I really think that by making this motion, that we are, we are doing two things. First of all, we're offering a contract to someone, well, we're asking the mayor to offer a contract, which converts her to an employee. As I understand it, the reason we went through Landrum in the first place was kind of separate things away from the direct employee, which is really, all that's done is cost us more money, because we've had to pay some to Landrum, and we've... money, because we've had to pay some to Landrum, and we've had an employee that doesn't have benefits. And, you know, I agree that it would be nice if we had an employee for the city council that had benefits, and in this case, Dr. Cox, who has, I think, done a good job considering what she's had to deal with. The person that oversees the contract is not the city council. I believe it's Mr. Reynolds and the executive branch. So in essence, I believe she really works for the executive branch, not for us. So I think that puts it at, as I said, a real disadvantage. And I think if we convert her to an employee at this point without having the issues clarified as to what is another part of this motion, which is to give us the ability, ability to fire, or, you know, I guess fire would be the main thing. Unless we have that clarification from the mayor, which as of today, he communicated with me, not, not giving in on that issue, he said he looks forward to our recommendations, but I think this goes a step beyond a recommendation. And I think we're kind of setting ourselves up here to get rejected on this particular issue. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes.
The citizens of this city voted for that charter, and, and the charter was clear that the mayor has the authority to hire and fire individuals. He made an exception to that, or he made an exception to the whole idea of even the, that the city council having staff. I mean, he, he said, you know what, the city council does need staff, and I'm willing to, to, to work out a solution there. If this body is waiting for staff to legislate, it really never needed that impetus, because a couple of points to make is that, first, you have a city staff. We have a city staff. But alls it takes is a request to, to start looking at issues properly routed through my office, frankly, on anything that this body wants to take a look at. And, and it isn't incumbent upon everybody having their own staff person. You have subject matter experts throughout this organization who have spent their lives on particular issues, whether it be stormwater, whether it be traffic, whether it be housing issues, et cetera. And yes, even, even willing to get smart on chickens, which was the one ordinance that we, that we passed not too long ago. So I understand the, the, the need, or apparent need for, for this body to feel that they need to absolutely control the council executive position. But that flies in the face of what the, what the charter says. And Councilwoman Barry, you may be right, and the answer may be ultimately to go to the people and say, listen, you know, is, on this particular point, do you think it's right for that to occur? But that's not what we're working on.
Right.
That's not the page we're working off right now. So, you know, I would hope that we can, again, try to set that piece aside maybe until later, Councilman, and recognize that this is a bridge that I don't really see any mayor that, that probably wants to remain in office is willing, going to be willing to cross, because frankly, if that occurred without the consent of this body, I think then that mayor and this administration would have a lot of, a lot of issues to deal with in regards to having very nine unhappy council people, and that doesn't serve anybody's interest. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselwoman, this will be your second time. Can I go to, uh, Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, he hasn't spoken.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate every fellow councilmember's commentary thus far. I also appreciate fellow councilmember Pratt's motion. I have had professional, positive experiences with Dr. Cox since she has taken office, or excuse me, assumed this staff position through Landrum. And I think that Councilwoman Canada-Win really summed it up when she reminded me that this is a work in progress. Councilwoman Canada-Win used the word, reminded us with a word, stability. But also with that stability, she offered, shed the light on the fact that with Dr. Cox here, we have an opportunity as council to begin to actually move forward with actionable items such as ordinances, which we very much need. So, and I also think that Councilwoman Pratt skillfully made a motion that, that did touch on something that I feel is closed business, and that being stipulating the exercise of termination power. I don't support the separating the two reasons, that being that the mayor cannot terminate without cause, because I feel that clearly, that the meeting of the Charter Review Commission on November 5th, 2008, public was invited, I've got the notes, a vote was made. Of course, ironically, Ms. Sherri Myers at the time was a citizen and did comment. She now is here today, President, and commenting again. However, that's after the charter was put before the public for a vote. We are not here today as a council to change or amend the charter. That's a separate item. That's a new day. That's not for us to do. We are here today to speak strictly to the position of the executive to the council. I support Dr. Cox. More importantly, I support, as Councilwoman Canada-Win stated, is we are here being asked to determine, do we support the creation of this position? And my answer is yes. However, I do ask fellow councilmembers to consider what our administrator has pointed out and what I am reviewing. Clearly, in these meeting notes, that a motion was made, action was taken, and clearly, the mayor was granted in this charter the sole responsibility to terminate all employees. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Thank you. First, I would like to respond to some statements Mr. Reynolds made regarding the council doesn't need to have a concern over the mayor firing the council executive staff.
I don't believe I said that, Councilwoman.
No, what did you say? I want to respond to what, what you said, not, maybe I heard you wrong.
Well, I've said quite a few things, so I'm not sure. But I, I never said anything in regards that this body shouldn't be concerned with the mayor firing the executive.
Well, I thought that's what you implied, but anyway, let me respond this way. The reason it's important that the mayor, and I agree, under the charter, the mayor does have the right to hire and fire city employees. However, there's nothing in that charter that says the city council cannot hire its own staff. We can contract to hire staff, just like the mayor contracts to hire staff that he wants. For instance, his chief of staff. Now, the mayor has, I want to remind you, he fired Thaddeus Cohen. He fired Becky Bray, who was salary, was paid one hundred percent by the CRA, without bringing those matters before the CRA and without getting any input from the CRA and the city council sitting as the CRA. So I just want to remind you of a little bit of history. We can, we are the legislative body. There has to be a separation of powers, and in order to do that, the city, this council has to have a, a level of independence from the executive branch. I have talked to Mr. Cox, to Dr. Cox about her working under a contract. She indicated to me that, that was something that she would consider, but that would be the only way at this point that I would, that I think is the most prudent manner for us to hire our own staff is, is under contract. That's why we went through Landrum. And what I hear this council doing is backpedaling now and saying that we don't need that level of comfort as a legislative body anymore. We can just put our feet into the hands of the executive branch. And I'm not going to go there, because I believe that in a democracy, you need a separation of powers, and the charter absolutely does not prohibit this council from hiring its own staff. If we have to do it by contract, we can do that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President Wu and fellow councilmembers. You know, my concern really is that, I have no problem getting answers through the executive branch. If I have questions about what's on the agenda, I send those to Mr. Reynolds. He promptly responds or gets the right person to respond. If there's an issue in our city where a citizen complains, I've really had no, no problem getting responses out of the city staff. And so for us to then appoint somebody or ask the mayor to appoint somebody at seventy-five thousand dollars a year, it's going to be hired and fired by him, we're just adding, in my mind, someone to the executive branch. It's not really to our branch, and I'm not sure if we should spend seventy-five thousand dollars plus benefits to add someone to the current executive branch. If we want to pursue someone under contract, that's something else. But the way I see this motion, that's what it does. It gives the mayor the ability to hire and fire our council executive, which makes that person actually a part of the executive branch. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. And I am obviously going to support the motion. I believe I second it, or maybe Vice President Canada-Win did. I don't know who did. But Vice President Canada-Win made some very good points, followed up by Councilman Spencer. I appreciate the remarks that Dr. Pratt mentioned. But, you know, we talked about a one-year review. We talked about the motion made. Anyhow, I could go on about some other things that were said, but I'll leave it at that. But I am going to support this motion. I have been working with Dr. Cox now for approximately ninety days, and it's very refreshing and helpful for me to, as a councilperson, to have somebody as competent as Dr. Cox here on board with us to help us navigate our way through helping run this city. I spent four years as a councilperson without this type of support staff, and I tell you, it's just, it's just, it makes our job a lot easier by having someone as competent as Dr. Cox. And I'm going to very much support this motion today and look forward to working with her in the future. Thank you.
Counselwoman.
Yep.
Counselwoman. I'd like to ask Mr. Reynolds about the compensation part. What are people in the executive positions of the city, what would be the norm for them?
Well, Councilman, I'm not sure what the norm would be. You know, I'm the highest-paid employee of the city. And then, you know, clearly, you have other senior department heads that, that, you know, do make around a hundred thousand or so.
Okay, is this job comparable to that?
This job has a whole different dynamic, and just having to, what, what we in the trade call the care and feeding of our council people, that in and of itself can, can be a lot of work. But the bottom line is, is that, you know, when, when we have a large department with, with forty, fifty people, that requires a lot of management, those are the ones that are normally compensated in the higher-end ranges.
Does that do for you, sir? Okay. Please keep track of your own times of speaking, because I know we're getting close.
Just one more thing. I wanted Councilmember Myers to understand that I do understand where she's coming from in being able to define us as a council. However, I do believe that in a year, ninety days is not enough to be able to define something that we, as a council, and I quote us, we, we did not have that person for almost two years with the first council. So right now, we're getting ready to have someone who can actually help us work through some of these very, very important issues that you bring up. And I just think that we need a person to be able to move us forward with that. Thank you.
Okay, now, yes, Councilwoman.
I'm just going to take my last opportunity to speak. I just wanted to comment on some of the things that I've heard. As, as Mr. Reynolds has mentioned, you know, no mayor in their right mind would want to terminate this person. It would be detrimental to their career and, and, but I do think part, part of my motion was, you know, they should have that, if there's a situation that we're not aware of, you know, if there's something that's really a, a bad thing, I would want the mayor to have that power to say, this is, this is bad, we need to end this. And so that was part of why I put that in there. And then along the lines of the charter, I think that the mayor has the opportunity. It doesn't say he has to have the, you know, he has to terminate anybody he wants, and he has the opportunity to say, what's in the best interests of this city is for the council to have the authority to terminate this person. The council decides how this person works. And so he has that opportunity to do what he thinks is in the best interests of the city. It's not a violation of the charter. It doesn't require change to the charter. So I hope that those, the, with cause for the mayor, without cause for the council, meets those, those desires for a functional workplace, but seeing what's in the best interests of the city. To Councilman Tahrar's question, if he, if this passes and he doesn't agree with it, we can go with the outside contract, as was discussed. But I think it is beneficial for this person to be an employee of the city and to have that relationship as a city employee to work with others. On the salary issue, I think that that's, you know, it's sort of an interesting game. Salaries are such a funny situation, but I hope that an annual review of salary would be good. On the question of the job description, I think when we wrote that job description, we were throwing out a bunch of things, hoping we could get somebody who was competent, who could define the job for us and say, okay, we need these things, this is what the council's asking us for, and then, you know, maybe we need a second person, or maybe we need this skill set. And, and so I hope that the job description is fluid. And so those were some of the things I heard that were of concern, and I, I, I think that, from what I've heard, those who are opposing are not opposing Dr. Cox, but maybe some structure. But I do hope that this council will support the motion and that we can move forward and get some good things happening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Liz Watkins, 2019 Augusta Avenue. I looked at the agenda last night, and I thought the item I was coming to talk about would come up sooner than this. I'm kind of shocked y'all are still talking about this. I do have the videotape of the special meeting that you guys called and had regarding this. It was not televised or not recorded on video, if you would like to review that. I have that. What I'm hearing here is it all goes back to the charter and what the mayor can and can't do. And that has been the problem with hiring this position from the very beginning. And we're two years into this new charter, and yes, the city did vote for the charter. But if you took a poll today and asked everyone who voted and voted yes, did you read the charter? Most of them would say no. And some of the people who did read the charter have publicly said on this microphone that I did not vote in a dictator. So I am asking you to put it on the agenda so we can revise, review whatever the charter. It's been asked to be done several times. It was supposed to be put on the agenda. It was taken off. And I think this city cannot move forward until we get this charter situation settled. We need that to be settled, please.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the audience? Before we vote, I'll, I'll go ahead. Before we vote, I'll go ahead and weigh in. I wanted to hear what everybody else had to say. I think that we, as a body, are extremely fortunate to have somebody of Dr. Cox's caliber. She has worked very hard to make the council look very good. She's very intelligent. She's a hard worker. She's tenacious. I think we're indeed fortunate to have her. You have to keep in mind what Vice President Joe Canada-Win so very aptly described to us. We're sort of building a house while we're living in it. There's sawdust falling on us as we look up, and we're trying to figure out where these beams go. I remind you, this is the very first council executive. This is the very first city administrator. These are very brand-new positions, and we're still trying to flesh out everything as we go. So issue number one is, in my mind, do we retain Council, Dr. Cox or not? I support Councilwoman Pratt's motion. The second part of that is who should have control? Well, regardless of whether I like what it says or not, I do what it says. And the U.S. government is the constitution, for the city is the charter. And it's very clear to me what the charter says. And I called the attorney today, and I hope he doesn't mind if I, you know, reveal one line. He says, you know, "Y'all have as a legislative body the ability to do anything you want. If you want, you could write a resolution that will no longer send troops to Iraq." Now, whether it has any effect, it does any good, is another question. I'm not arguing whether the charter should or should not be changed. What I'm saying is, is that you have to change the charter through a charter review committee and have it on a ballot and have citizens vote for it. And I think we get into a very slippery slope when we find out we don't like X, so we won't mess with X. But we like Y, and we'll obey Y. We're national laws. May not like the law, but if the law's laws on the books, that's what you live with. So the second part of Councilman Pratt's motion brings us back in line to charter. Now, I know that there are a lot of people that have fears. And I guarantee you that if something happens that I'm not happy with, I'm not going to be shy. I can guarantee you Councilman Baird is not going to be shy. I can guarantee you Councilman Myers is not going to be shy, or as well as anybody else sitting around here. If there's something this body wants, and we feel the executive body is going against us, I don't think we, as a body, will have any problem stepping forward and saying we have a problem. But at the same time, we have to live with what the charter says, in my mind. So for those reasons, I am going to support Councilwoman Pratt's motion. And with that, unless there's any further discussion, is this your, have you gone?
I'm the only one that has not spoken twice.
Good, okay. Thank you for keeping count.
Yep. I support the motion and ask that fellow council members consider an amendment to raise the salary to the $82,500 per year. As, is just, I think that discussion.
Second.
Okay, so now that brings us to a whole new area, discussion on the motion.
If there's no objection, I can let that be a friendly amendment to the original motion.
Does that need a second?
Whoever's second, it needs to still agree.
I call the question.
Can you restate the motion, please?
Counselman?
No, no, no. You called the question.
I call the question.
On the full motion?
Yes, the amended motion, Ryan's amendment to Dr. Pratt's.
That's what I want, a restatement of the complete motion with the amendment.
Would you like for me to restate if that, that, now, it's $82,000?
Eighty-two-five.
Eighty-two-five, okay. I couldn't remember if the five was in there. Eighty-two-five thousand, eighty-two thousand, five hundred salary, well, let me start over. That the council asks the mayor to enter in a employment contract with Dr. Cox and with these particular items in the contract, that she receive $82,500 with benefits. The mayor may terminate for cause, council may terminate without cause, and providing for annual review of performance and salary.
Okay. And I believe the question's been called, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, Councilman Baird, does that clarify?
I just need to hear it.
Certainly. So now, since it's a friendly amendment, we're doing one vote to cover everything, if I understand. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Ma'am Clerk, can you get that? Okay, thank you very much. Next order of business, mayor communications. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item under mayor communications in action is subject F dot Economic Development Transportation Project Fund Agreement. The recommendation is that city council adopt a resolution accepting and authorizing the mayor to execute an economic development transportation project fund agreement between the City of Pensacola and the Florida Department of Transportation for infrastructure improvements at the Port of Pensacola.
Move the approval.
Second.
Moved to second, discussion, Councilman.
Is that free money? We don't have to do anything. It's just free money.
Well, that's an excellent question, Ms. Vice President. And Mr. Messer, can you please inform council as to what the strings are in this particular agreement?
Yeah, I apologize. I was talking to President Wu about something, and I think that what you're asking me is, what are the conditions that we have to meet in order to qualify for the 2.2 million?
That's correct, sir.
All right. The mayor has a bad back, a real bad back, and wanted to be here, but he's not. So he asked me to specifically talk to you about the condition that's going to have to be met in order to fill the requirements, fulfill the requirements for this DOT grant, because there's no such thing as free money. The mayor supports this grant 100 percent. He asked me to convey that he believes this is an important step forward for the City of Pensacola, particularly the port. Now, here's the catch. The city is going to represent, among other things, that this project will create 100 full-time permanent jobs. The mayor asked me to convey that he believes that's going to happen, but that he can't do it by himself. And that he recommends vigorously proceeding with this project, but asked me to relay to you that he not only expects, but needs, the full support of this council, as well as the chamber in the creation of these jobs, because he can't do it himself. He asked me to convey that this was an important step forward, and in the course of fulfilling what he thinks is an important step forward for the development and the infrastructure of the port and the creation of jobs, he wanted to make, he asked me to make it absolutely clear that this council understood the 100-job requirement for this grant, that he couldn't do it himself, and that he wanted the full cooperation of this council and wanted this council to fully understand that he needed their support. And then the question is, well, jeepers, what happens if we don't create 100 jobs? Well, technically, the city will have a time period that extends two years after the completion of the project in order to certify to the state that we've created the jobs. So, you know, we don't have to create the jobs today. We don't have to create the jobs tomorrow. We'll have two years from the completion of the project to do that, which the mayor asked me to convey he believes is attainable with the full support and cooperation of council and the chamber. But that's the catch. And so I think I've discharged my duty. I defer to Mr. Reynolds on any further comment on it. And of course, be glad to answer any questions.
Counselman?
Thank you, President Wu. As I read the contract or the grant, it's 2017, is completion? Is that correct?
That's the projected completion.
So we'd have two years after that to create 100 jobs? Well, I hope we can do that. It gives us a few years. We have the chamber in here. Mr. Luth should be able to help us with that.
Okay. Vice President, I'll get to Mr. Luth after.
No, I like the idea of the money. However, I would like to have some idea of the creation of the 200 permanent jobs at the port. Where would those jobs come from? And how does the 2.2 million dollars facilitate us making those jobs permanent? So they're just a whole lot of, are we going to get the money and spend the money and do the repairs or whatever we're going to do and not make sure that we have the jobs online? Or are we going to hold that money until we are able to determine what jobs are going to be created? It's just a little fuzzy here, because, I mean, we're not in a position to give back anything after we've spent it, even if it's a little amount. So I just want to know how this kind of process works, and do anyone have any idea about the permanent jobs? Because many of the jobs at the port are not necessarily permanent. They come and they go, the longshoremen, you know, they come, they go. So what is permanent as far as port is concerned? I want to define that. Because sometimes people don't always work there all the time. They come and go, depending upon the type of cargo, so.
Thank you, Ms. Vice President. The jobs would have to be permanent. You're absolutely correct. Where are they coming from? I can't answer that. We're in the realm of economic development, and anytime you have economic development and government that come together, there's always a lot of nebulousness that seems to exist. We are in the cloud of that nebulusis right now. And clearly, this is the first step of a long-term march towards those jobs. So we were able, with the chamber and the mayor, to secure this additional funding from the state of Florida. It was a tremendous victory for this city. This is the first step in securing, then, that funding so we then can make the infrastructure repairs and changes that we need to entice those jobs in. And I can tell you that there are discussions ongoing with various entities in regards to the port facility. And anytime that we can increase the infrastructure, we have that much more opportunity to bring those jobs in. But unfortunately, I can't, I can't tell you where those jobs are going to come from.
Yes, Counselwoman.
Well, I'm going to support the motion. I think that the infrastructure that is being made is going to hopefully enable us to attract certain types of industry, that we don't have right now the infrastructure to attract. But it's also my understanding that we have already had some strong indication that there is at least one prospective tenant for that port if that infrastructure is made and can accommodate certain types of industries. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And also, please understand that any spending of this particular funding has to come through this body as well. So as well does any lease agreements, ultimately, hopefully, that we will be able to secure.
Okay, well, I think that it's infrastructure needs that we need in order to make us more competitive. So I'm going to support it. And, you know, everything in life is a risk, and, but I think that this is something that we can pull off.
Anybody else in council? Yes, Councilman.
I'll make mine very short. Thank you, Mr. President. But I'll support this today with the assurance from Mr. Messer that he will be involved in this process, that he will review these leases, that he will be engaged in this negotiation. I don't want to get to the finish line, a foot from the finish line, and then have a meeting canceled on a Sunday that's supposed to happen on a Monday because we haven't had our city attorney review documents. And I find it offensive when we have leases that are brought before us and negotiating going on, and our city attorney hasn't had it up proper notice and hasn't had the opportunity to review those documents. So with your assurance, Mr. Messer, that you will be involved in this and will review this lease, I will support this action. Do I have that assurance from you, Mr. Messer?
I will assure you that I will discharge my legal duties, and no lease will be brought to you that is not a legal binding instrument that's executed in the best interest of the city.
That you have reviewed?
Yes.
And you've had adequate time to review it? And, okay, so I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else before we call on the, yes, Counselwoman? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, real quick, I just wanted to say that this is sort of the, one of the reasons why I decided that I wanted to be on city council and be more involved is for economic development issues like this. And I'm, I'm just, I'm glad to see that we're stepping out and spending the money and taking the risk to bring more jobs to the city. And I know that they're not guarant, or they are guarant, well, we are guaranteeing, but we don't know how we're guaranteeing. But that's what you got to do these days, is get out and spend the money and get the jobs here and realize that it's just, you can't just sit around and do nothing, expect people to come here and be job. You have to be proactive. And I think that's, this is definitely what this does, and I'm just, I'm really excited. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Yes, sir.
We were looking at a reworked facility locating in this warehouse where this crane is going to be put in. Has that softened, or we still think that we'll be able to get that company to come and occupy the warehouse?
Yeah, Mr. Mathis will come and see if he can flesh out what it is.
Yes, Councilman. When the construction is complete, we will have a first-class facility there, and there are interested parties in doing the work that we have planned for the upgrade of the facilities.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Councilman?
Thank you. I support this action as well, in the, definitely in the spirit of economic development. I just want to make sure that Mr. Johnson's comments, I could almost, I could almost misconstrue them as being some sort of extension or renewal of Mr. Messer's contract, but I'm sure he just meant whatever person would be sitting in that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I too share the concerns that Councilman Johnson expressed. I have looked at the agreement with FDOT, and they, that's not an agency that just gives money away. You have to meet a lot of requirements or in those agreements with the city. And they don't really ask you what you want to agree to. They tell you what you have to agree to, pretty much. But I want to make sure that our city attorney has, you know, reviewed the very complicated and lengthy agreements with FDOT to make sure that he feels from a legal point of view that they're in our best interest. Of course, a lot of the things that are in the lease have to do with economic development benchmarks and proof that we've met certain conditions. So anyway, I just wanted to just say that I too feel more comfortable knowing that our city attorney is reviewing all documents that we are approving in the nature of contracts.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Call the question.
Second.
Okay. Now, I've not asked for input from the public.
Sorry.
That's okay. Would you have any objection if we move forward with that, say?
Yeah, I'll withdraw if the public wants to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Hayer, 2101 Seneca Highway. I'm recalling a, one of the town hall meetings that the mayor spoke at a few months ago where he unprompted made in public view and in the meeting a statement which was, "The government does not create jobs." I am very pleased to see the mayor reverse his position on that very important issue. I feel unlike that opinion, that the government can, in fact, create jobs. And in fact, the city does have a responsibility. I am glad to see that there's a plan here. Yes, it's not all carved in stone, but on the other hand, it's not all smoke and mirrors. There is actually a path to success here. We know that the port has great potential, both because of the historical importance of the port and some of the recent developments. If, I just drove past that tanker that's docked down there right now being serviced. Perhaps that's a future. Certainly, the city needs those kinds of economic opportunities. So as a citizen, I'm very happy to see, I would be very pleased to see the council step forward on this and support this project.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience who would like to address counsel? Okay. In that case, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimous. Okay. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is subject promotional fund grant agreement. The recommendation is that city council ratify the action of the office of the mayor in executing a promotional fund grant agreement between the city of Pensacola and the BP Settlement Trust for marketing, landscaping, and maintenance of the Pensacola Veterans Park, Veterans Memorial Park. Further, the city council approved a supplemental budget resolution appropriating the grant funds.
Move the approval?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on council. Audience, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Meyer.
Liz Watkins. The, I think this is a good thing. I was very involved in the creation of the park with your mother, Ms. Benson, and I was in a lot of the meetings. There was a lot of, a lot of power struggles over the creation of the park, which was originally the, for the half replica, the Vietnam Memorial. And I don't know how many of you know this, but that was actually a turkey that W.D. Childers threw into a bill at the last minute, got it passed. There was a lot of angry people. I, for one, was for it. I think we need to do more for our veterans. I, out of my pocket, produced a video of that day, and I want to be, I want to be able to bid on the video portion of this grant. It is a grant, and I think it should be an open bid. And I want to bid on it, and I think that everyone in Pensacola who owns a video production company that wants to bid on it should be allowed to bid on it. I do not think that it should just be handed to the Zimmerman Agency like they were handed everything in Oaklusa County, including writing a check for a $700,000 yacht. So this is my formal request that Watkins Productions be considered to bid on any video projects from the BP money for the Veterans Memorial Park. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, before, yes, Counselman Myers?
Well, Ms. Watkins raises an interesting issue. I would like to see small, local businesses be able to bid on the marketing of this project. After all, the BP oil money is to be used to help local people. So I don't know what the procedure is for assuring that this marketing funds be used at the local level and that we encourage small businesses to be utilized for this. But I would certainly encourage the mayor's office to do that.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just so everybody understands, because this funding is coming into the city, the city has a responsibility to ensure that the funding actually goes through our normal processes, our normal purchasing guidelines. And so all of those will apply to this fund, something that would not have occurred if it went to anyone else. And that was part of the reason why BP was looking for a strong partner, if you will, with this particular grant.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Upperson?
Just a point of clarification. I believe the city just established a group that's looking into managing the park. Will they be the entity that will be supervising this? Or will the city contract it out, and then these people will, after the fact, deal with the contracts that the city creates? I'm a little confused because I thought that was the whole purpose of setting up the separate citizens' council, was to make these sorts of decisions.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Actually, that's incorrect. The body that is currently, that has been formed by the mayor, is a body that is only slated to be in existence for a very short period of time with one specific purpose. And that is then to determine what should be that overall body that has the ability to manage the park. So this first body is simply the organization that will make that recommendation as to where we go with it. Now, that being said, it would have been nice to be able to hand the money then straight to that secondary body. It's clear that that's, you know, we, our timeline was too short to make that happen. And therefore, you know, frankly, from my perspective, it would have been a lot cleaner. The city's not involved. It's, you know, it's quite literally the veterans' organization controlling it. But at this point, it was clear that the only recourse we had was to bring it in within the city responsibilities. And also, please understand that this grant is very specific on what these funds are to be used for. And so that includes some marketing campaign, repainting of the helicopter, some landscaping that needs to be done, and also some money for maintenance as well. So it isn't like the city can simply use these funds for whatever they wish to use them for.
Okay. Okay. With that, I don't see more hands. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Passage unanimous. Okay. Ms. Reynolds?
Mr. Johnson, app.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is subject Airport Pensacola Aviation Center LLC Amendment Number Nine. The recommendation is that city council authorize the mayor to execute Amendment Number Nine to the lease and operating agreement at the Pensacola International Airport between the city of Pensacola and the Pensacola Aviation Center LLC.
Move the approval?
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion in council? Yes, Ms. Myers. Counselman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. I noticed that this contract, I think, may I wait until the city attorney comes back? Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
I wanted to ask the city attorney a question.
Certainly.
May I wait till he?
Okay. He should return momentarily, should we?
Okay.
Counselman Johnson, do you see the attorney close by in the hall?
Mr. Messer.
Thank you very much, Counselman.
You could have done remote broadcasts for him.
Counselman Myers had a question?
Yes. I wanted to ask about this contract. I noticed that on the signatory page, it says that the content is approved by Melinda Crawford, that the city attorney has approved it based on form. Now, what concerns me is I feel that the city attorney should be involved in formulating and negotiating the content of these contracts. This contract clearly says that Melinda Crawford is the person who, it appears, drafted the content of this contract. Is that true?
Yes, ma'am. And we've talked about this before, and let me put it in context. The city attorney's office, with the exception of the CMPA-related contract that Councilman Johnson got the city attorney's office involved in, and my commitment today to be involved in the port lease negotiations, as a general matter, does not negotiate the terms and conditions of the contract. That's done by the department head. My duty, as opposed to my job, according to the council policy, is simply to verify that the agreement is valid in form and legally binding. So you're correct. My office had absolutely nothing to do with the content of this agreement. That doesn't make the agreement a bad agreement. It doesn't make it a bad negotiation. It's just how the process works. For example, the airport has a consultant that they use to negotiate their agreements. ESP has a consultant that they use to negotiate their agreements. And the fact of the matter is, when it comes to me, the only certification the city attorney makes is that it's a valid agreement and that it's legal.
Okay. Well, I guess what concerns me is that, and I have a lot of respect for Melinda Crawford, but she isn't an attorney, and I don't know who drafted this lease. So I'm not going to support it at this time.
President Wu, if I can?
Yes, Ms. Reynolds?
Each department of the city has experts that they rely upon, whether it be in drafting contracts or other issues. It would simply be prohibitive cost-wise if we were to have attorneys involved with every agreement that we put together, because frankly, it's simply not necessary. What is necessary is that we have agreements that are legally binding. You have expert staff who, whose role and job it is, including Melinda Crawford, to put these agreements together with the help of experts in the field that they rely upon. Mr. Messer, for all of his great qualities, is not an expert in all the fine tuning, fine tuning of airport law, any more than he is F dot stormwater requirements, any more than he is with federal housing regulations. And that's why, that's why you see the particular strictures on the documents that he reviews. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Vice President.
Right. We're talking about who's doing the drafting, but when the city attorney looks at it, who looks at it to make sure that it is, that something wasn't missed or it is in the best interest of the city and we did not miss anything? The issue for me is not necessarily that the city attorney doesn't do the drafting, is that I want to make sure that whatever is drafted, somebody has reviewed it to make sure that it is in the best interest of the city and nothing was left out or loopholes weren't created or anything like that.
Thank you, Ms. Vice President. I wish I could say that there will never be things that are left out of contracts. I've found that in my time, that contracts that have been executed by this city, for example, just in the last couple of years, are needing some assistance in the past. So we will make mistakes. We will not be perfect. But ultimately, yes, it is reviewed by the experts in the field. It is forwarded up by, and approved by the department directors, and then ultimately forwarded to me. After I review that, then it goes to the city council attorney for his review when it comes to form and substance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions among council? Audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have one opposed. Okay, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is subject Airport Property Acquisition L-5421 Campus Height Subdivision. The recommendation is that city council authorize the purchase of L-5421 parcel ID number 14, TAC 1S, TAC 29, TAC 2113, TAC 00, TAC 001, in the amount of $85,000 plus 346, 340, 3,467.75, for closing miscellaneous costs and legal fees, plus a 5% contingency in the amount of $4,423.38, for a total authorization of $92,891.13.
Move the approval?
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion among council? Yes.
Mr. Reynolds left off the three right before the last TAC, but between the parentheses, is that I can avoid this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselman.
Thank you very much. A very quick question about this piece of property. Is this in the city limits, Mr. President? Can I ask Mr. Reynolds that? Is this property in the city limits?
I do not believe it's currently in the city limits. Well, wait a minute. Dan, do you know the answer to that question?
It is not, sir.
Yeah, it is not. But again, Counselman Johnson, ultimately, the hope is that all these parcels will become part of the city limits in the future.
Right. I just had a county commissioner ask me last week about these acquisitions we're doing, if they're in the city and the county. And I adamantly, well, I very strongly expressed to him that these are still in the county. I'm looking forward to the day that we annex these properties in. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else, counsel? Anybody in the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay. She left. We have two apps. Okay. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is subject Airport Authorization for Work Order Number Five. Hatch Mott McDonald Design Services, replacement of perimeter fence and installation of security doors at the concourse exit lane. The recommendation is that city council approve Work Order Number Five with Hatch Mott McDonald covering design services for the replacement of the perimeter security fence and for the installation of automatic glass doors at the concourse exit lane at Pensacola International Airport, contingent upon the receipt of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration.
Move the approval?
Second.
Okay, moved to second. Discussion in council? Audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Passage unanimous. Two members absent from the vote. Okay. Number nine, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is subject Airport Authorization for Work Order Number Six, Hatch Mott McDonald Design Services, replacement of perimeter security system. The recommendation is that city council approve Work Order Number Six with Hatch Mott McDonald covering design services for the replacement of the perimeter security system at Pensacola International Airport, contingent upon the receipt of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration.
Move the approval?
Second.
Okay, moved to second. Discussion among council? Audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passage unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Under council communication action, there is none. Discussion items, there is none. Now moves us to consent agenda items.
One, four, five, seven, eight, nine.
Okay. Moving us now to informational items. Item 10, year-end, small business report. I believe you have a packet on that.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 10, informational item is in your packet. Mr. Reynolds, do we need any elaboration on this other than what we have?
No, sir.
Okay. Number 11, request to vacate right-of-way. Item number 11, that is also an information item. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, I see two representatives of the folks that are making this request. Is this going to be a public hearing? Did I get a notice that Thursday night, we're going to have a public hearing about this at 5:30?
Yes.
Okay. Are we going to?
Well, discussion at that time.
Are we going to have staff there to answer questions, you know, in-depth questions? Because I got a feeling there are going to be a lot of folks there for... Because I got a feeling there are going to be a lot of folks there for...
Right.
We're going to have Mr. Owens there to answer any questions?
Yes, sir. We'll have both Mr. Owens, Ms. Morris, myself, all who have worked multiple times on this particular issue.
Right.
And will be more than happy. If there's any specific information that any council person would like us to take a look at prior to that, please feel free to reach out to me, and we will get that information for you as well.
Yes, sir. Maybe if I could get ahold of you before that meeting, I got a couple of questions for that. Make sure that I'm clear on a couple of things. Thank you, all. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yes. Okay, now, yes, go ahead.
Just in the interest of full disclosure, I don't think it's going to matter one way or the other, but I want council to understand that Mr. Hurst is a friend of mine, former neighbor. I believe in the past, we have discussed this casually, like over-the-fence kind of thing. I've worked with Mr. Beasley before. I don't think that's going to affect or disqualify me. I want to assure Mr. Hurst and Mr. Beasley that I've done no work on this issue, I haven't submitted or made an opinion, and no one's asked me for one. So with that being said, unless something happens between now and Thursday that would disqualify me, I don't think there's any reason to disqualify myself, because I don't think I'm going to be involved in this. I think it's a pretty cut-and-dry deal.
Yes, sir. With that said, I also would like to disclose that I have talked to, you know, many folks with this, including Mr. Beasley, about this, Mr. Hurst briefly about it, Ms. Lassard, Mr. Adams, many people about... I mean, it's a whole list of folks. This is a property, is in District Four. And I've had many discussions with people who feel strongly in favor and against. So just want to make that public also. But I think I can go in with an open mind and hear the facts and look forward to that. Thank you.
Excuse me. Item 12, request vacate right-of-way. 116 South Bayland is also in your packet. Request for zoning map amendment I Street, and we won't have discussion on it unless anybody wants more elaboration. Okay, that then moves us to council communication new business. I believe, Mrs. Mayo, you have an item that you would like to bring to the council.
I would like to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayo. Let me get the Vice President here.
Yeah, I just wanted some information. I am going to have a town hall meeting in the next three weeks, and I've often gotten questions about the BP, the Restore Act dollars, and people are asking me what projects has the city council submitted, and what is the process for getting any Restore Act dollars? So I just wanted something from maybe the mayor's office or the council about... Because you may have already talked about this before, because I'm new, and they started talking about it last year, early in 2012. But I want to be able to answer something when I'm asked about the BP and the Restore Act dollars. What is the process for submitting projects, and what projects has the council submitted in reference to the Restore Act dollars?
Let's take it. Okay, good. Ms. Mayo?
Well, I want an answer from somebody at some point in time.
Yeah, and if I may, Ms. Canada-Wind, that ultimately is a county issue. Unfortunately, the legislation as it was written, as opposed to a lot of our neighboring states who have actually have their senators who carved out specific representation from particular cities, for some reason, the very small paragraph that our senators put in the bill did not have that. But regardless, you know, we're in contact with the county. The county is ultimately going to be determining what it is, the process is going to be. We do have a list of projects, both projects that we previously had submitted for grants, everything from the ferry system between us and our neighbors across the bay, to other projects that we really are looking for to be game changers, if you will, as opposed to just paving a road. But as soon as we get some real actionable facts and process from the county, everything is speculation up until that point, so...
Okay, so we cannot request from them officially the process, or timelines, or anything like that?
Well, they have not determined that yet, ma'am.
They have not determined...
No, that's correct. As soon as we have that information, and the county, at least to my knowledge, you know, they still have not done that. But, you know, we are taking a look at that, and again, obviously, the city has a great interest in those funds. And I will make it a point to inform council. As soon as I know of anything solid, I'll probably send you an email on it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. I do have something.
Okay, Councilwoman Myers?
It wasn't on that one anymore.
Was, okay.
I have several things I would like to bring up. I don't know, I guess it would be under unfinished business. I have a copy of the charter I would like to pass out to each council member. If I could just have some help passing... Well, I'll just take it.
I guess what this would fall under is rules and procedures. I have not had any input, or Dr. Cox has not requested that I have any input into her efforts regarding addressing some of our rules and procedures. I think that it's paramount that council members be fully engaged in this subject. What I have here before you is the charter. It's Section 5.04 of the charter. I'm sorry, 5 TAC 05, called City Boards, Commissions, and Authorities. And there are two things that we are mandatorily required to do under the charter. There is no ifs, ands, or buts about it. And it's two things that I'm concerned about. One is the establishment of boards, commission, and authorities has to be established by ordinance. It clearly says that in the charter. Unless otherwise provided by law, city council shall establish or terminate by ordinance such boards, commission, and authorities as it may deem advisable from time to time. I would like to know, and perhaps Dr. Cox could find this out for us, how many boards, commission, and authorities we have, and have they all been established by ordinance? And if they have not, under our charter, they're not valid. So that is something I would like for council to request that Dr. Cox look into. The second thing, we said two years ago, we were going to do this. This issue came up when the board, when the city council terminated Ann Regan's appointment to the General Pension Board. She had filed a grievance with this council. We promised her that we would establish rules and procedures to entertain her grievance. We never did. However, the charter mandates, unless otherwise provided by law, city council shall determine procedures, membership, and removal from city boards, commissions, and authorities. That is something we don't have any choice. We have to do it. I think two years is long enough for us to put this matter on hold, and it is mandatory, just like any other enumerated duty the city council has under the charter. So I'm going to ask the city council, what I would like to see the council do is to set up a rules and procedure committee, to work with Dr. Cox, to look at our rules and procedures. The reason I think we need a council committee is because Dr. Cox needs to work with the city council to address rules and procedures. And I particularly want her, or us, to immediately address our charter duty as it comes to boards, commission, and authorities. So I'm going to make a motion that the council establish a rules and committee, a rules and procedure committee, to work with Dr. Cox in looking at our rules and procedures, and particularly addressing our statutory duty as it relates to boards, commission, and authorities.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Yes, Councilwoman?
Well, I support the general concept. I think that there is a plan to have a workshop in a couple of weeks to review our rules and procedures, as well as discuss the formation of committees. And I think it might make more sense to do that in a general conference. I know you're talking about more specific rules and issues, and there could be merit to having a committee that really chunks through them all. But I think that in absence of a general discussion about what sort of committees and what structure we want to create, I think it would be better to just hold off on that and have that as part of that conversation. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up. If that occurs, I'm comfortable withdrawing the motion at this time.
Okay, thank you. And then again, if you're not satisfied at the, you know, product of that meeting, by all means, please, you know, re-submit that.
I have one other issue of unfinished business, and that is the hiring of independent counsel in the event Mr. Messer has a conflict of interest. That was never resolved, and I'm going to... I think it's going to be difficult for us to find a local attorney who has not had some dealings with the city, and who may be reluctant to represent the city council. But I'm going to make a motion that we send out a request for proposal, I guess is how we would do it, to hire, to retain an attorney to represent the city council in the event Mr. Messer has a conflict of interest.
Second.
Okay, yes, Mr. Messer.
And I'm feeling brave, because I don't know why, but every time I stick my neck out, I get it chopped off, but I'll take a run at this. I concur. That's a fine plan. But, you know, as you may recall, we had Doug Sales as the... Who is an eminently qualified person, and, you know, it's not my job to tell you what to do. I'm just suggesting that if we're floundering around here, he could certainly, until something more permanent comes up, be the go-to person. Very qualified, capable, has worked with this council before. Where I had a little hiccup, but, you know, that's not going to adversely affect anything.
May I respond?
Certainly.
I think that's a tremendous idea. In fact, I was going to suggest that myself, but I was afraid if I suggested it... But since the city attorney has suggested it, I would like to amend the motion.
And, you know, if people find out we're both thinking alike, one of us is going to get criticized.
I know the papers need to write about this one, don't they?
Hey, anybody else on council?
She's going to...
I'd like to amend the motion that we, the city council, contact Attorney Doug Sale and inquire as to whether or not he would consider retaining us in the event Mr. Messer has a conflict of interest.
I'll second.
Normally, I wait till the very end before I speak, and I'll go ahead and steal that. Councilwoman Pratt?
I was just going to say that I think I'm the one on this council who knows him the best, and I've been very impressed with him. While I second the idea, and I would love to have him, I do wonder whether he would love to have us. But you can always ask. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on council?
And just, help me understand, if we do retain this attorney, where the money's going to come from to pay this council? Would someone give me that answer, please? Or if we do use this attorney, where do the funds come? What pot of money does it come out of? Who signs the check, et cetera? Thank you.
Oh.
Councilwoman?
The money would come from the council budget. I would assume, I mean, I don't know how they really work things, but the checks, I would assume, would come from the mayor, signed by the mayor. And I think that, you know, recalling how we used Mr. Sale in the past, it was at the recommendation of the city attorney that I contact him. He had already been retained as the CRA attorney, and that at the city, or as the CRA attorney, at the city attorney's recommendation, because it was a little bit of a weird conflict. I worked directly with him, and I think that basically, I would imagine the way it would work would be, you know, we as a body would say, hey, there's something we want to do. Mr. Messer would say, ee, I'm not so certain I want to do that. How about you guys work with Mr. Sale? And then at that point, I would imagine, we as a council would vote, let's have Mr. Sale draft us a potential agreement on this issue, and Dr. Cox would work with him. But the mayor would sign the check, so it would come out of the council's budget. That's my personal best guess, since no one else was raising their hand.
Well, I'd like clarification on that, too, because is it coming out of the council's budget, or the attorney's budget, or, you know, what line item is it coming out of? I mean, you know, so I'd like clarification on that. Thank you.
Anybody else on council?
If I can, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, you know, it can come from several sources. The source that it's actually should come from is the line item for professional services that the council has in its budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Spencer?
I just want to get some clarification on this particular motion, since it's got such a high degree of specificity already associated with it, that being this suggested or endorsed peer of Mr., professional peer of Mr. Messer. Are we bound to, at this point, are we just exploring this engagement and have an opportunity to look at rates? Because this does not provide the council an opportunity to survey other equally capable law firms that we may not know that could respond with lower hourly rates. And I think that's a responsibility we have to our tax-paying citizens. And therefore, perhaps an amendment can be made to the motion that includes the language Mr. Sales, as well as two other firms, no less than three firms, should be solicited.
I will accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. My concern, and again, is I agree 100% with the need. There's no question there. My only concern is to be tied down to a lawyer, and then not knowing what you need the lawyer for. So in other words, if it's a tax issue, is it, you know, there's a wide range of people to specify in a wide variety of areas. And so we already have somebody on retainer that specializes in this narrow area. We may then have to go back and then ask money to get another lawyer to help us in another area. Am I making any sense? So my concern is not with having the funds, is having a person tied to that fund prior to the time when the need is needed. Yes, Councilwoman?
I would say, though, that in this case, it really is a specialized thing. This is probably only when we have charter kind of structural issues. We should never have a tax... If Mr. Messer has somebody, you know... If Mr. Messer has somebody, you know, if, in the case of the Bay Boulevard discussion, he had a personal conflict of interest, then he recuses himself, hires a different attorney within the attorney's office. This is only when the council has a sort of a structural thing, and we're looking for someone with a, you know, a constitutional law background as a, or, you know, somebody who's been a city attorney or something like that, not necessarily a specialist in a particular field, but I would think so. I mean, I think that the idea of hiring a generalist city attorney knowledgeable lawyer would be approximately the right direction. But, you know, I do, I just am curious to see what kind of attorneys might be willing to do it. And I agree with Councilwoman Spencer that probably rather than doing an RFP, it is nice to go out to certain firms, because, you know, hiring an attorney is not quite like hiring just a general thing. You actually have to have a relationship with them. So, thank you.
Councilwoman.
I think, too, that Mr. Messer is the person who's going to be kind of making that decision whether he has a conflict or not. So it's not like we're just going to be going out and hiring somebody. A lot of it's going to be up to Mr. Messer. He has an ethical obligation, if he thinks he has a conflict, to say that, and at that time, we will go out and talk to the person we've retained.
Okay, yes, sure. Thank you, President. And just to sort of put this in context, I've only claimed a disqualification once during my tenure here, so it's not going to happen frequently. Councilwoman Pratt is absolutely right. Any situation other than a conflict between the council and the mayor, even if I were disqualified, could be handled by Ms. Tillery. So the only time we're ever really going to have me in my office, or my office and I more properly, my kids aren't watching this, disqualified would be when there's a conflict that can't be resolved between the mayor and the council. And that's only happened once, and hopefully with the new year, it won't happen again.
Okay. Any other discussion on council? Audience, all in favor?
Can you restate the motion, please?
Okay, Madam Clerk.
It was hard to hear from over here.
Okay, what she said was that the motion, if I understand it correctly, is that we contact Attorney Sales out of Panama City, who incidentally I was very impressed with as well, and two other attorneys to see what prices they would give us to represent us should the need arise. Is that correct, this amendment?
Yes.
Ms. Meyers, okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have one opposed. All right, I'm sorry, Mrs. Mayo, to keep you waiting.
And I've got, I've got something as well.
Oh, okay, Ms. Mayo, I'm sorry, there was another councilman I did not see, so.
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Press.
You have no problem. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Mayo.
Barbara Mayo, 30111 De Meere, 32503. First of all, Happy New Year. I was only going to address one thing, but since this was brought up about the BP Restore, I was at the county commission meeting, and there was a lengthy discussion about how the mayor and the city couldn't get together on their appointee on the board for the BP. And quite frankly, it wasn't, didn't look real positive for, it didn't make us look good. It didn't make the city look good that we couldn't make up our mind who we wanted on the board. And they gave a date of, and I'm sure everyone knows this, January the 31st, or else you don't get any representation, because they don't have to give the city any representation. So I heard that, and I would encourage us to get someone on that board. The main reason I came is, and you're going to continue, and I went to the county on this, before the charter, we had four, at least four, sometimes more, joint city-county meetings quarterly. And since the charter, I think we may have had one, and it didn't work out too well or whatever, but we have new blood, we have new commissioners, new city council. And I'm pleading that especially with all, like the library, the transit, the BP, let's have more than two meetings a year, which is what I was told by George Stewart, that we're going to try two meetings a year. This is imperative with everything that's coming about, and as Councilwoman Pratt stated about delaying on these committees and appointed by the charter, we need to get right on this. We need to get somebody appointed on that Restore, that BP Council Committee. We need to have a meeting of the minds with the county and the city and the mayor, and we need to get this thing moving. And we can't, it's not, it's not necessary to lollygag around. So I am pleading with you, let's do the thing that's best for the community, and let's have at least quarterly meetings and as soon as possible. I know we have one on January the 22nd, which is on a Tuesday, and I wasn't quite sure if it was here or if it was at the county. I'm pretty sure it's probably here. It's nine o'clock in the morning. I think the main discussion was going to be on the library, but I was told that at the 5:30 meeting. So, and that's great, so we can bring up other things. But let's please get this thing going, where the city and the county are working together, and we have that rapport going. And I just implore you that we do that and do it with a new attitude. It's a new year, and, you know, I'm excited about all the county commissioners and the new city council. I think we're all trying to do the right thing. And, you know, if y'all don't get along, I don't care, and I've stated it before, you know, don't get along, but get along on my dime, because I pay both. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and please, please, I encourage you to please go ahead and get a committee member, because at first they said January 15th, and then it was the 31st, and then they, and if you don't bring a name, they don't have to allow the city to have anybody on the committee. I mean, and so I implore us to do that, you know, as soon as possible. And if I'm wrong, you can correct me, but I was at the meeting, so I really ask.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I see three to council. Yes, Ms. Reynolds.
Mr. President, just a correction. The meeting that the county is having in regards to the library, although it is a special meeting, it is not a joint meeting. It's not a meeting between city council and the county board. It is a county board meeting. Now, I and members of the library staff will be at that meeting as we continue to work on our long-term solution, which ultimately will come back here to be implemented and blessed by this body. But this is essentially their working session as we continue to hammer out the details on the library.
Thank you. Councilwoman, I don't know which one.
Do you want to speak on what she said? Okay.
Yeah. I think we've only had one joint meeting since I've been on council, and that was almost two years ago, I believe, year and a half ago. I think it would be of a great benefit, since we have so many new council members, and we also have two new county commissioners, for us to have a joint meeting. I would like to see a discussion on how the ECAP fund, gas tax, for instance, going to be used between the city and the county. I think there are a number of issues. It would be in our best interest to sit down and have a joint meeting. And the Councilwoman, Joel Canada-Winn, brought up the Restore Act funds. So I think, Ms. Mayo, for bringing that issue up, and I'm very much in favor of it, and I hope the rest of the council is, and I hope that we can make that happen, because I thought the last meeting we had was beneficial.
Okay, Councilwoman.
I have two items, one's really quick, to let you know that Thursday and Friday, the firm that is looking at the feasibility study about the municipal charter school will be here, they'll have representatives here, meeting with various people, council members can, Clark Merritt in the mayor's office has been facilitating that. If you want to meet with them, that would be great. You can't meet with them when I meet with them, but otherwise, there are probably other slots. But also, if you have people you can think of who might be interested in being part of the discussion, just forward the names to Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Merritt, somebody. Forward them to somebody who cares, and they'll make sure they get in there. The second thing is, firstly, rules question. I am interested in pulling an item off the table, but usually that's an unfinished business. I don't know if we have unfinished business now or it needs to wait till Thursday night.
I believe we're in new business. I don't see unfinished business.
So we don't pull something off the table right now? That's okay. I was just clarifying the rules. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, my last question is, what is this about, we have not appointed someone to the board for the Restore Act? I would just like to know, I mean, if that's an issue, who, from my understanding, there was someone that was appointed, that person is no longer here, so now we have to reappoint someone. So what is that process? Do we reappoint, or does the mayor reappoint?
I didn't want to weigh into this subject at this hour. Basically, from what I understand, at the county commission meeting, the decision was made for the mayor to submit a name forward to the council, and then for the council to approve that person forward. And so that is the procedure that's in front of us. Now, there's another bag of worms, since we had at early point nominated somebody to be on this committee, and that's the can of worms I didn't think would be very productive for us to get into at this late hour. As I personally see it, what the county has set out as their ground rules would supersede what we have already done, because it's just like if something is passed in Tallahassee and passed down to us, then it's a leg piece of law that we have to listen to, because it's coming from a government body that sits above where we are. But that issue I don't want to get into, but as far as what I understand, that's the issue that's been put forward at this point, and for us then to make a decision of what we do from that point on. Okay? I don't know if that answers your question or not.
No, I just want someone appointed.
Well, but according to what the county commission said, that the mayor has to bring that name forward to us.
Right, I'm fine with that.
And once we get that name, then we.
Okay, okay.
So that's where we are. Yes?
I think my understanding, and perhaps Councilwoman Fair will even elaborate further, is, okay, is that as the body that will be determining the funding route, or the, they are strongly suggesting, is probably putting it nicely, that we use a process that they voted on, I believe, and that was that the mayor provide the name and that that individual be vetted through this council, approval or nonapproval, so.
And I think the words were even, if you would excuse me, councilmember, that they really don't even need our representation, which I would find issue with and would be another, you know, argument for another.
But I have, and then I know we have someone that wants to speak, Mr. President, and then I do have, I just want to make sure I don't get dropped from the radar on.
No, no.
Agenda requests.
Okay, I have two items. One is very easy, quick. During the meeting, it was mentioned that in order to amend the charter, you have to have Charter Review Commission, which is not entirely true. You can also do it by ordinance and also by petition of 10% of the, I believe, the total number of registered electors in the city. That's my informational point. The next point is, you may have seen on TV, there was, I was pushing to have an ordinance on no texting and driving, or no distracted driving. It was based on an ordinance that was passed in Parkland, Florida, and is on the books down there. And what I've been informed is that the state legislature has preempted us in our ability to have an ordinance that legislates that particular issue. I don't know how Parkland did it, but they did it. And there is a statute on the books, which was passed, I think, back in 2002, which limits regulation of wireless devices while driving to the state. There is a move right now, there's a bill in the legislature, Broxson from Santa Rosa County is one of our state legislators locally, is a co-sponsor of that. And I would, I'm going to make a motion that we draft a resolution in support of that particular piece of legislation.
Second. Wu, the second discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Excuse me, how many times have you spoken?
Well, I wanted to speak on the issue that Ms. Canada-Winn raised. I've only spoken once. I don't think I've even spoken on that issue. I can't remember. But just for clarification, so the other council members will know, the new council members, this council voted to appoint Maran DeWes to that Restore Act Committee. And the reason she would have qualified is because she would not have been a city council member. And she has kept up with these issues. She's been to seminars and workshops on this issue. So this council has already taken action. Now, the Escambia County is not above the city of Pensacola. Escambia County has no authority whatsoever to direct a process by which we appoint someone to a committee. Now, if we want to accept their suggestion, that's fine with me, but I just want it for the record, for the citizens to understand that the city of Pensacola is not subordinate to Escambia County at all. And just because they make a recommendation doesn't mean that we have to, they have no authority to bind us to anything they might recommend. But I just want the council to be aware that we have already taken an action. A motion was made, a vote was taken, and I think we voted unanimously at that time to have Maran DeWes as our representative on that committee. Now, at that time, we did not know if we were going to be allowed to have one or two individuals on that committee. But that's where we are now, so I don't know what course of action, we've already taken action, and so we could, and I'm sure the mayor is aware of it, his office does keep up with council action, so that's where we are right now.
Yeah, I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but I feel compelled to now, and I agree with what President Wu said. And from the county commissioner that I had coffee with about 10 days ago, they are not obligated to give the city of Pensacola a seat at that table or on that committee, is what I was told. I don't know if there's legally bound to even give the city of Pensacola a seat at that table, a seat on that committee, and that's what I was told. So that's a little gray to me right now. You're absolutely 100% correct, Councilwoman Myers. This council did take action about three months ago or so. A nomination came forward for Councilwoman DeWes, and it was voted on unanimously to name her to that committee. But since then, I think there's been more conversation at the county. And again, I have been told that the county has the option not to even give us a seat at the table, so I'm not kind of sure where that's at, but I just want to throw that out, kind of reiterating what Dr. Wu said. Thank you.
Before I go to the audience, anybody else in council? Ms. DeWes on?
You get it.
Yes, I'm a little concerned that we have this appearance of flexibility from week to week as to what this committee structure is and what the representation from this council is. I believe this council took action to name Mr. DeWes when the county requested that we have a representative, that her name have a representative, that her name would be in place. I was at the county commission meeting when they voted to make up, the makeup of the committee, and they were struggling with how do we ask for someone from the city? Do we say the mayor points, whatever? And I rose and suggested that they address a request to the city of Pensacola, and that would be handled through the charter that governs anything that comes to the city. And at that point, it would have been my understanding that a letter would have been drafted from the city requesting the city of Pensacola to name its person. At some point, Ms. DeWes's name was apparently removed from a list that was submitted in response. So I would like for this council to find out what communications directly have been sent to the city of Pensacola, which would have been governed by the actions that you had already taken and which maybe would eliminate the confusion that seems to be giving the county commissioners this thought that you guys don't know what you want to do. You have made a decision, however, perhaps the administration has not conveyed that message clearly to the county commissioners. The county commissioners established a format for their committee. They are meeting tonight at 5:30 to have the environmental member of that committee be voted on by the environmental groups. They have talked through how this is going to happen. And the fact that we as a city have not given a strong statement back, I believe, has given this constant rediscussion opportunity at the county level. And I agree with what Ms. Myers was saying. We are governed by a charter. If a request comes to the city, it should come before you. The mayor should bring it to you for consideration. He may give you input, but it is your decision. So I strongly urge you to look at your responsibilities as council members of the city and let the county know that you are the council, you are the legislative determining branch of the city. Thank you.
Ms. Myers, I hope you're keeping track.
Well, I want.
This, this is more than two times.
I would like to respond to what Ms. Dubuson.
No, I want to ask that the council give approval for you to continue.
So moved.
Okay, moved. Moved to second. All in favor of Ms. Myers continuing, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, let's do it again. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to offer a solution. If we want to accept what the county has suggested, and we've already taken action, all we need to do is contact the mayor and say, we're sending our recommendation to the mayor. Now, he may bring other people forward, but I think that if we want to go with the county's process, that they suggested that the mayor bring the person to us, our persons, then, and we've already taken action as to our selection, let's just send that name to the mayor's office, and that will go into the pot of people he brings before us.
I hear a second.
A second.
So is there a discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
The, the procedure that the county outlined was not to bring a pool of people for you to select from. The procedure was for the mayor to make his nomination and it to be confirmed by this body, just to be clear.
Well, we'll send our nominee over there.
Okay, yes.
The only thing that I want to say here is that the nomination, the person should not be an issue. I'm hoping by the 31st in three weeks or before, that we have a person before us confirmed. And the, and the fact that this council and the mayor's office, executive branch, are on the same page with this. This should not be a power struggle. This should not be a struggle. I mean, we're trying to get money here. And so we have put this thing into this power struggle. All I want is a person nominated, or if there's a list that comes from the mayor's office, they send this list, and we get down to business here between these two, the legislative body and that executive branch. And then when this discussion comes back, we'll talk about confirming our person and not who is supposed to do what. Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you. I won't support the motion, mostly because I'm sure the mayor is aware of our previous action on this, and he knows that, that the council has considered that, that Maran DeWes would be a good representative, and that he will look also, I mean, even when we took that vote, I voted with some reservation because the county was in flux, who, who they were going to appoint, what were the slots, what were the specialties, expertise that they would have. And so I would hope that the mayor will take the time, look at the options, consider the different skill sets, and, and make an informed recommendation. I know it's a sort of a screwed up thing, but I think the county's somewhat right in the number of little weird squabbles and, and I, and they understand the mayor would like some involved, to be involved, and they understand the council would like to be involved. And they thought, okay, since they can't figure it out, we'll figure it out. And I think the mayor should look very hard at the options, and I, if he comes up with somebody good, we should just approve him. So I won't support the motion because I know he knows that the council previously acted on Councilwoman DeWes. Thank you.
I'm going to make a few remarks. We're proving the county commission right. All the things that they've had to say that was not of a positive nature, we're confirming it. They were very clear. They wanted, A, the mayor to submit a name forward. Not for us to make a recommendation of eight people to the mayor. They said, period, they wanted the mayor to submit a name forward. Point number two, this body then confirms, or doesn't confirm, the name that comes forward. We don't like it, we don't accept it. But keep in mind, as somebody has mentioned, Councilman Johnson, I believe it was, there is no obligation to have a city representative. And let us not get to the point where we're squabbling in here among ourselves and cost ourselves a seat at the table. Because they said, this is your procedure, and we don't have to, by any obligation, have to have you here. And I'm hearing people say, well, we're going to do it the way we want to, and we're going to push it forward. And to me, that's an awfully dangerous position to be in. Because like I said, they have no obligation to have any representation from the city at all. So for that reason, I'm not going to vote for the motion. Yes, Mr.?
I'd like to make a substitute motion, that we approve the process recommended by the county commission, that the mayor submitted a name to us for our ratification.
Second.
Okay, moved to second. Yes, Councilman.
The only thing I'd like to add to that, and if Mr., well, what I, what I don't want to do is, and I agree with you, Dr. Wu, we sometimes confirm maybe some things said about us, maybe not, but, and I'm not saying today we are, but is it, if there's a name that comes to us, and this council does not accept that person.
Then we go back to the beginning.
We start all over again.
We start all over again.
So that, that's, that's going to, I mean, is there, is there, is there an opportunity to have maybe been more than one name? And I'm just throwing that out there for discussion, because I hate that one name be brought forward. This council doesn't confirm that name, and then we just start all over again.
This is the reason I didn't want, at this hour, to get into something dis-aptused after we have been through a long meeting. I thought hitting it fresh at a meeting, we could probably cut to the chase, but that's okay. We're seeing democracy in action. Councilman?
Thank you. This is my first time to speak on this issue. I think this is a perfect showcasing opportunity for our mayor to show very good leadership, diplomacy, collaboration. We are shouldering our mayor with the passage of this motion that Councilman Bear has just provided, which by the way, I support, with the responsibility to fulfill one of the most important roles in our community. And I understand Councilman Johnson's anxiety, but I task the mayor with the, again, the responsibility to meet individually with all of us if necessary, and to provide a candidate that not only the mayor believes in, but that we hopefully unified in, as a council, will also believe in. So I am in favor very much of, of this motion.
And incidentally, I want to commend the council. This is a very difficult and touchy subject, and, and y'all have handled it amazingly well.
We haven't voted yet.
Okay, with that, is there any other discussion among council?
I just question whether this is necessary. I mean, the process is already in place for him to do that.
Well, I think the only reason that it is necessary is some of the council people feel that they have a different position, which is their right. And so what we're trying to do now is to settle what is the feeling of the majority of the council. So I'm not taking one side or the other, one being good, one being bad, but we need a clear direction on how we, as a group, want to go, given the situations we have. Okay, anybody in the audience? Yes, Ms. I'm aye.
At the risk of stirring the pot a little bit, we, the Environmental Advisory Board has had some discussions about what, how we felt about who could represent the city. And we have sent a recommendation, which I believe we sent to President Wu and also to the mayor, to recommend Christian Wagley as being a representative. And I think that that may be a possible solution here. Christian is someone who has proven that he can work with all parts of the city government. He is very well-respected, not only locally, but statewide, as being an expert on these matters, and is quite familiar and able, and the EAB unanimously decided to endorse Mr. Wagley, so I would like you to take that into consideration.
Right. And if you would permit me, I would encourage you to pass that information on to the mayor's office, because it will be coming to us from that office.
It has already been sent to the mayor's office.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Councilman?
Thank you, President Wu. Just on this substitute motion, I think what this motion does provides clarity on who people need to go to to submit their names, and that's to the mayor first. And once that name gets made, then they need to also work with the council, so.
And before we vote, I would like to say, I think the county commission was way off the mark. I think this council is going to prove to be a very productive and a very close working group, and I want to go on record saying that I am disappointed by some of the comments that were made about this fine august body, that I find it a very great honor to work with. And with that, if there's no other discussion, the motion on the floor is, substitute motion is Councilman Bear's. All in favors indicate by raising your hand. Okay, passage unanimously. Okay. And with that, I believe that there's only one other person that wanted to speak other than Councilman Spencer. There's Mark Taylor, but you're on the council, so you go ahead first.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. I'll be brief, and thank you, Mr. President. But I know we've only, we have not been able to sit as a body for an extended period of time due, due to the holidays, and I really need to resurrect some items for further discussion and action. One is, we had during the budget process, we as a council heard from Marcia Whitaker in our housing department, the, some of the programs that the city was involved in that had some oversight and effect and positive impact in the implementation of architectural guidelines in neighborhoods. That led to further discussion about Habitat for Humanity as an organization, and how could we, as a council, be a partner in their certainly, when I say partner, in supporting their continued supply of housing for those that need that sort of foothold to gain independence. We, I have, as an architect, seen communities across the country successfully integrate Habitat's housing product in various neighborhoods of different styles and different historic periods in a way that's respectful of those neighborhoods. And at that time, we as a council, I recall those, and of course, we have new members, but there was an affirmation through, somewhat an informal directive request, that staff followed through with discussions with Habitat, with an invitation for Habitat to come back and speak to us as a body, so we could perhaps take action in, certainly in the, in a public meeting. I am asking you, Mr. President, to facilitate that invitation so that we can, again, as a governmental body, take action and, and help Habitat in their continued supply of inventory. But keep in mind, there's a sort of a double-edged sword. They're one of the, they are the largest, if I believe, the largest number, the issuance of permits goes to one single entity, it's Habitat for Humanity. That says something about our community. Says we're a community in need, says we are a community that has stepped up to meet the need, but it also says we have got to be, have oversight over what will be an aesthetic that will be with this community because of the, the, the number of homes that will last long beyond our term. Okay, that's enough on that.
Do we need a motion to move that forward?
We don't.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. But perhaps procedures will help us in determining later what needs a motion, for instance. But I do respect that you will follow through. We've got Lila Cox helping us. Number two, I met on December 17th with not only Jeannie Roden, but all other members of the East Side Neighborhood Improvement Association, often called just the East Side Association. I met with them at the Cobb Center, and I made a commitment to those individuals that we would bring back up the discussion of the, the formal adoption of an ordinance, allowing them to be recognized, not, they are recognized as a TIF right now. However, the, the guidelines regarding the membership, the governing body that can help, that can help nominate amongst themselves the projects that they want to continue to have improve their neighborhood, that's not in place. I feel it is in their best interest if we, as a body, adopt an ordinance to help establish the criteria for membership for that organization.
And it can be patterned after all the TIF areas?
Yes. And then finally, my last one, Mr. President, is while Thaddeus Cohen was here, he had done a lot of groundwork to help establish what is necessary to formally create what is safely referred to as a quiet zone, and where you have the, basically, the overlap of railroad traffic, freight cars, rail cars with pedestrian, cycling, and vehicular traffic. And I am asking you to bring that back up as an agenda item. And that would mean staff has previously done the work, there's the cost associated with it, et cetera, but I've received plenty of communication from affected District Six members.
I believe on that issue, and Ms. Reynolds, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's certain federal regulations concerning the railroad crossings, if that, Mrs. Sp, Councilman Spencer, is your issue, is it the noise, the honking of horns?
There's an infrastructure, there's an infrastructure improvement, infrastructure improvement.
Right.
Policy.
Right.
That the, basically, railroads.
Right.
Have regarding what's necessary.
Right.
And it even, it does involve affecting some of the, the grid.
Right. My recommendation, which you're, you're free to ignore, is initially to work with Mr. Reynolds, because I believe that's a federal issue that governs railroads, and I don't know if we pass anything that would have any binding on that.
Yes, there, there, I think you will find out, Council President, that Thaddeus provided all of the empirical data and.
Okay.
Down to even working with city engineering, what's necessary.
Okay, good, good.
To do it.
Would you wind in if I asked you to work with Dr. Cox and get that out to us prior to meeting, so we don't go into a meeting and go through all that history, whether we can have it beforehand before going to the meeting?
I would be honored to do that. What I can't control is when Councilman Bear's. What I can't control is when Councilman Bear's texting law takes effect, there's going to be a lot more honking. I, I do believe, but.
And if I may, Mr. President-
Yes.
-just really quick on that issue. It was brought up in 2008 by Thaddeus. At that point, it was about a $2.1 million investment.
Yes.
But I, I will tell you that Councilman Spencer is correct. We receive a lot of, the mayor's office receives a lot of concern from, from residents on that issue. The mayor has reached out to CSX. He actually had CSX come down with me, Derek Owens, Algarza, and the mayor. We went from place to place to place. The, the, the $2.1 million, $2,008 value is higher now, but who knows? Maybe that could be a restore project or something like that in which, that clearly will have an effect on the, on the, on the downtown community and also the, the business district.
And in that case, your timing would be excellent.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ca-
I just wanted to assure that these issues that Councilman Spencer brought up get on the next committee of the whole agenda. So I'd like to make a motion that the last two issues regarding the East Side TIF and the Quiet Zone be placed on the next committee of the whole.
What about Habitat?
Pardon?
Habitat.
And Habitat. Architectural. Pardon?
Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Oftentimes, staff doesn't have the turnaround ability that we need to get things immediately on a committee of the whole agenda, so I would just ask your patience. For example, I believe the, the, the staff deadline is Thursday of this week, if I remember correctly, to have things for the next meeting agenda. Now, that being said, certainly, the, the CSX stuff, I think I've got all the information that Councilman Spencer needs on that, and that's something we can certainly do relatively quickly. But that may not always be the case, and I would just ask patience from, from council on sometimes it may not be on the very next agenda, but it's not because staff isn't looking to get it there, it's simply that we need more time to prepare, so.
I, I want to make sure it doesn't get dropped off the radar. That's why I'm making the motion, so that it becomes an official action of the council, so that it will be placed on the most feasible committee of the whole.
Very good. And so you're amending your motion then?
Yes, so it doesn't have to be the next committee of the whole, but as, as, as soon as practical.
Okay, very good. Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, done. Okay, uh, let me see.
I have a quick point of order. We voted on the substitute motion. We don't vote on the main motion.
That is-
We just need to take one more vote.
Yes.
Environmental advisory.
But we have voted on the substitute motion.
Right.
It became the main motion.
It became the main motion.
Which now we need to vote on that. We didn't vote on the main.
All right, very good. You're right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, finally, Mr. Tay, Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
No, thank you, Dr. Wu. Thank you, City Council. Now, I just wanted to urge you, I know you spoke earlier about tabling the motion. I certainly respect Councilman Johnson's thoughts on that. I think he would love to see the CMPA board shrink a little bit and as well as more minority and female inclusion on the board. Totally respect that. I just want to encourage this committee of a whole to really push that through hard. I've only spent about a week just playing with the numbers, and I don't think any of y'all know, or you all know what a burden this park can quickly become to. It's already $2 million just of interest payments every year. 2017, we're going to be $4 million. And, you know, we've, we've never marketed the park. I watch MLS, I'm sure Andy and others do. We've LoopNet, we're on all that stuff every day, you know? We've never marketed the park. Even if we, I've run numbers last week, even if we get to full potential, you know, 10 more Quint Studers over there to build and develop and all that, we're still going to be $1 million short a year, you know, come 2017. So we've got a huge uphill battle. We need some go-getters, some shakers and movers. Fred, it was an awesome nomination. I was pumped to see his name on that as well as a broker. I'm also a real estate broker, and, I mean, we know revenue. Even you name the stadium, you do everything, you renegotiate concessions, there's 100 different things that we need to do to get revenues up. One thing that we totally missed, that, just in a short review, is we have a provision in our use agreement that the city of Pensacola and CMPA can have a retail souvenir space inside the Wahoos retail store. It's in paragraph 8.1B. We just missed an opening season with 250-plus thousand people that went through those parks that we probably could have easily have made another 100 grand or so, you know, that me and 30 of my neighbors, real estate taxes now are paying for, that, that could have been handled just with souvenirs. So I think there's a lot of things that we've missed on, and I think a little bit of young blood and new blood would be good for the committee, and I really would, would encourage you to try to push that through as quick as you can and take that off the table.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, can I address Mr. Tay?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor, is, I would very much encourage you to set up an appointment with Randy Oliver. Mr. Oliver, I believe, has been retained by the mayor to look at enhancing revenue opportunities at the park. And if I could encourage you to take all of your ideas to meet with Mr. Oliver, maybe Mr. Reynolds could facilitate that meeting with you and Mr. Oliver, you could bring all your ideas forth, because I think he's looking at, at all options to enhance revenues there. So Mr. Oliver's on that right now. You, as a taxpayer, are paying for him right now, so I'd encourage you setting up a meeting with him to go over all that. Would that possibly be possible to do? Mr. President?
I can email it too. So I have everything documented in spreadsheet, so I can meet with him. We've looked at Marina's price per square foot all over the southeast waterfront properties. Spent a bunch of time on LoopNet, a bunch of time on neighboring MLSs and all that. And, I mean, we've, we've got to go hard on this thing.
Sure.
A few more years. We should have been on this two or three years ago.
Well, I'm meeting with Mr. Oliver tomorrow at 1:00, and I'm sure he would like to hear all your suggestions, so I would encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gunner?
Mr. President, council members, I appreciate it. I was apologize because I was out of the room for a moment whenever the motion to table came up. But, you know, basically, a couple of things that I did want to point out, you know, I share, you know, the concerns about the size and makeup of the board, but I did want to point out, I'm fairly positive that council is the one that increased the size, you know, to begin with, and they did just, and also two female members were just appointed, you know, to the board. And so what we, you know, what was being proposed here was replacing, you know, Dick Baker, who's a white male, and, and Councilwoman Myers with the two of us, and based on the new nominations, you know, I feel like those are very reasonable. You know, I've, I've been involved on the operations and audit committee since Mr. Todd asked me to be on there, and the committee tasked me with, you know, looking at the budget problems, and, you know, and six months ago, I was pointing out, you know, the, kind of the dire situation we were in, but it's difficult to communicate that just as a committee member. And, you know, this is something I'm very passionate about, and, you know, that's the reason why I wanted to be on the board, to bring, you know, some of those issues to the forefront and, you know, solve some of those issues, you know? And I, I basically, you know, I talked to most of you, I thought I had your support, and, you know, I'd ask you to, to, you know, pull this off the table and re-vote on it is, is what I'd like to ask you to do, if that's possible, Mr. President. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman.
Yes, I, I think it's a, it's a big mistake at this time to not fill these positions. We, I, I, I believe-
May I raise a point?
Do we have a point or a-
Technically, all of that discussion was inappropriate, and so either we need to move to bring it off the table, and I asked earlier if we were meant to at this point, and, and you said that, no, it's, it's unfinished business. I, I will bring it up on Thursday night. We can have a great conversation once it's off the table.
Excellent point. Excellent point. Any other business to come?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Oh, uh, there, there's a motion, and it's not debatable, but we made a unanimous vote on the Restore Committee, and we need to add that to the consent agenda.
Move to approval, second.
So if you would permit-
Sure, sure.
Okay. All in favor of adding the Restore Committee procedure to the consent agenda? Please signify by saying aye. It was unanimous vote, so we're simply adding it to the consent agenda.
Move to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilman. I would have been-